Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council session for this Monday, March five, excuse me, March four, 2024. Welcome to all of you joining us from home. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well, again, thank you all for coming tonight. It's great to see a full audience of folks interested in all things going on here in the city of Lakewood. Tonight, we start with our proclamation and presentation section of the agenda. The first proclamation is that recognizing March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. And if Dan Worth, Executive Director of the American Red Cross, will join Councilmember Ryan Pearson at the podium to receive the proclamation, followed by a photo. Okay, so for this city Lakewood proclamation, whereas in 1881 Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Lakewood who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. And whereas residents of Lakewood have joined millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters, donating essential blood, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of Lakewood and work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And whereas we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month. Yeah, feel free, Dan, say a few words.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Councilmember Pearson, and thank you Mayor Whalen and City Council for making some time this afternoon or this evening to proclaim March as Red Cross Month. You join several hundred cities across our great nation who are proclaiming March as Red Cross Month. Here in Washington State and in our chapter, the South Puget Sound and Olympics, we are facing a few items right now that I just want to bring to your attention. One is a critical blood shortage. So please take about an hour of your time to register to donate blood. I ask that folks on the council lead by example, or folks in this room, you can be a leader, and sign up at redcrossblood.org, type in your zip code, and find a drive near you. We're at a critical need for blood donors. And then second disaster. We're getting on fire season. And in recent years, we've always thought that fire season is something that affects the eastern part of Washington State. Last summer, we had two significant fire events right here in Lakewood, in the greater Lakewood area. It's time to prepare. It's time for you to be ready to have your escape plan and your family's emergency plan. So I ask that you, you know, take some time while it's still wet and rainy outside. But it's going to get hot, it's going to get warm, it's going to get dry again this summer. We're facing an increased threat from the climate crisis, and we continue to see more intense disasters with more frequency. This last year, the American Red Cross responded to $24 billion disasters throughout the year. That's a six-fold increase from 10 years ago. So we're really seeing an increase due to some of the effects of the crisis that we're facing with our climate these days. So thank you again for your time. I'm also looking for, John told me to tell you guys that I'm looking for board members.
Yeah.
So we'd love to chat with you about that. Please do reach out to me if you want to serve in the local community. And we definitely are looking for volunteers and board members to help expand our mission. I'd also like to extend a thank you to Vic Victor Martinez, who's one of our board members sitting here in the front row. And we'd love to take a picture with the City Council if y'all have time.
Absolutely, we're going to come all down and take a picture with you and Vic. So thank you very much, Dan.
Great, thanks, John.
Again, thank you for the mission of the Red Cross here in our region, Dan and Vic. And we appreciate all that you continue to do for all of our members of the community, including our servicemen and women at JBLM and elsewhere. Thanks again. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Women's History Month. And if our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, would join me at the dais, we'll present the proclamation. Well, I'm especially honored and pleased to present this tonight as a husband and a father of three daughters, all of whom are very accomplished in their own right, recognizing that they can do anything that they put their mind to. And so it's our honor to present this proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of this nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement in this country. And whereas women have served our country courageously in all branches of the US military. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of history. And whereas the city of Lakewood currently has 81 female employees, which total 37% of the city's workforce. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims March 2024 as Women's History Month here in the city of Lakewood. And we call upon all residents to acknowledge and honor the contributions and accomplishments of our many accomplished women, including our own deputy city manager, Todd Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for recognizing Women's History Month. On behalf of all of the employees, I am honored to accept this proclamation and recognizing the achievements of our past and present accomplishments. We are committed to furthering that through our work here at the city. So thank you.
Next, we have an opportunity to recognize the 2024 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Program participants, which there were many. And so I'd like to call on Sylvie Anastrella with Blue Scooter Media and the MLK Program Committee members who are here tonight. Certainly Superintendent Banner would be welcomed to come on up. So we'd like to present certificates to those who participated in the 2024 MLK Project. With Sylvie's help, Deputy Mayor Moss and I will present the certificates.
Thank you for having us today. And I was just asked to speak about 20 minutes ago. So a little nervous, so I asked Mr. Banner to come up with me. So this year is the fourth year of the MLK Project for Lakewood. And the project quote was, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." The MLK Committee asked that this year's project be centered on the voice of youth. And CPSD has amazing students. But mentors are also so important to shaping our youth. And we had some outstanding mentors who graciously agreed to participate. And I just want to recognize that all these people, it takes everyone to make a project like this. It was a tremendous amount of work and a lot of cooperation between all these people up here and even more that weren't able to come tonight. And I see Coach Miller and we have Elder Woods, who was the voice of MLK in the second and third video where he said, I should have him say it, Elder Miller. He said, "But whatever you do." And he was really great and he was very willing to participate. Coach Miller did such a great job. And we have Carrie McLennan, who was the teacher that was, her artwork was featured in the first video. So, and we have Lakes football players and Lakes students. Every single one of these kids and people just had such great views on the quote, the MLK. They're just honoring Martin Luther King and our city and our community. And I can't thank them enough. And this was the best project so far, the most rewarding one out of the fourth year, four years that I've done this. And so thank you all for all your help and all your work. And you guys have just, they have such great futures. So thank you so much. And Coach Banner, Mr. Banner, would you come in?
Coach works. Majority of my life. So I was asked to speak about 30 seconds ago. But this is not hard to do when you're talking about the quality of the young people in the Clover Park School District, the quality of the folks that are leading them, Coach Miller, the quality of the mentors in the community and the teachers. So it's really natural. I want to say thank you all for the partnership. Thank you for participating in a collaborative partnership, because that's how we get things done. It's the fabric of our community. And what you see here is the fabric of our community in terms of, I'll say, older, younger, and in the future, right? And so it's the fabric of Lakewood that you're seeing here. And that collaboration is going to continue to just weave that so much tighter as we move forward. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to say anything great about our team, teaming, our students, our staff. And it's just not hard to do. You can put me on the spot. And guess what? I don't have a three-minute limit this time, so this is even better. Thank you all. Coach, I don't know if you want to say anything, please do, because...
I wanted to thank Sylvie for all of her work. She did a great job on it and for including us. It was so amazing to see our young men share their hearts. You know, when I, first time I watched it with my wife, I thought, man, did we plan that out? Did we game plan that? Or I mean, it went so smooth. It was like, I didn't spend one second talking to the boys about what to do. I just told them, you want to give this an opportunity? Yeah, let's do it. And they did it all on their own. So it was just a really cool thing to see them share their hearts. I've been coaching for 45 years in this community, deep roots. And the reason I do it is because of the young people that I get to touch every day. This morning, a young man came in and he needed some deodorant. He's struggling at home. And I got him a two-pack and we got it to him. He gave me a hug like I gave him a million dollars. And I said, "Just remember, we all at times need a little help." I needed help at times. And don't worry about it, just keep moving forward." And I just thought of what we did this fall. And I'm just, once again, thank you to the Lakewood City Council, all the work that you're doing. Thank you to Mr. Banner, who's a tremendous leader in our community, collaborating with people. And then our administrators, we've got a couple administrators here tonight. Mr. Kurtz, our principal, Mr. Lind, our vice principal. And the leadership at school right now is just dynamic and allows us to do our work and support students. And so, once again, just in summary, just so proud of our guys. And I don't know if they want to come and say a few words, but man, they just did an amazing job. If you haven't seen the video, I would encourage you to check it out. And thanks again for recognizing our guys.
So I don't, I definitely don't want to leave the youngest member of the group, and that's Christian, because he did an amazing job. He's my godson. So we did, he was so great and was so patient with me. And he did, if you guys didn't see the first video, you did an amazing job.
Well, we are just so proud to have partnered with Clover Park School District and MLK Committee. Fabulous job, well done. The deputy mayor and I are going to recognize with certificates those that we have listed as participants here. And I'm sure there were a lot more folks involved. But Deputy Mayor, if you'd hand out the certificate. Amida Dilworth? Amaja Dilworth, excuse me, sir. Congratulations. Yeah, that's great. Thanks so much for your work on that. It was awesome. Dennis S. Gibson? Stand up there, we'll take a big photograph. Yeah. Not here, we'll hold that one out. Christian Jones? Yeah.
Oh, congratulations.
You did a fabulous job. You were like the star actor. Chris Makin? Okay. Elijah McChristian? Not here today? Carrie McLennan? Featured, there you are. Carrie was the Telecom Elementary art teacher, was featured in the video and the MLK art that was featured. So we're going to get a big photograph together. Of course, Coach Miller, thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Come on up. Daryl Owens, longtime member of our Arts Commission and extraordinary actor, Daryl? Sean Stevens? Fabulous. Chase, you were involved, Chase Washington, come on up, sir. Good to see you. And Larry. Larry Woods, goodness sakes, we can't, we can't pass without saying hi to Larry. Fabulous. And Superintendent Banner, of course, you run the whole show. So again, thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. Give them a great hand, we'll take a photograph. Council, let's, we'll surround them here. So next, continuing in our youth theme, we have our Youth Council report. And I'll call on the council members, Youth Council members, to come on up and give us their monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Council. My name is Vile Johnson, and I'm a junior at Harrison Prep and a third-year member for the Lakewood Youth Council. And today I wanted to acknowledge to Council an achievement made by Lakewood youth. To start, on August 3rd of 2023, I attended a youth violence summit led by Assistant Chief of Police John Unfred and Venetia Willis-Holdbrooke, principal at Gravely Lake K-12 Academy. And the purpose of that youth violence summit was for community organizations to develop and coordinate community efforts to promote healing and resilience for Lakewood community members. And from this youth summit discussion, we discussed the increase in juvenile crime. And we were trying to find out ways to assist in not only bringing a gradual decline to juvenile crime, but also support the Lakewood youth and to accommodate for them in what they believe is needed to prevent juvenile crime. And a major idea brought up was safe spaces. And of course, Mr. John Unfred came up with ways to coordinate with that. But from their conversation involving juvenile violence and creating safe spaces was introduced and supported by students in Clover Park Superintendent Youth Advisory Council. And with that stir, students began to talk amongst each other and new conversations and opportunities began to form. And to go with that, there's a YMCA-supported event that occurs in May involving youth in government, where the youth are basically given the opportunity to run legislation. And we get to act like as senators and House representatives and lobbyists and other positions amongst that. And we are attempting to pass bills that Lakewood or students come up with in Washington. And a junior from Harrison Prep named Nathan Lewis was inspired to create a memorial bill titled Safe Spaces in High Schools. And he wasn't in any leadership positions. He just did it based off what he heard from everyone else, because safe spaces was really prominent and it was an idea that everybody agreed with and everybody wanted to connect with. And if successful, Nathan Lewis's bill has the opportunity to be passed and reviewed by real senators and House representatives. So that's really great. And I just thought I would come up here and tell you guys about that, because that's a big step for us. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'll turn everything over to Chase.
Hello, Council. My name is Chase. And to add on to that, currently, while the Youth Council is planning our youth summit, we're reaching out to different people, professionals and others with experience to help us out with our vendors and our breakout sessions that we are having at the Youth Council. For the breakout sessions, they'll be held in the Harrison Prep Gym and all several different breakout sessions that focus on youth empowerment, such as political management, college preparation, resume building, conference building, and balance, which are all key things that the youth need to help them in their future and to help them currently.
All right, thank you, Council. I'm Dylan Pants. I'm a senior at Lakes High School. And as a council, we're currently working on questions and interests from the youth in the area to hopefully ask you during the beginning of our youth summit this May. And alongside asking you questions, we're also willing to answer your questions. And we see that as sort of a dialogue, a conversation between the two of us on how we can grow as a community and essentially what initiatives we would like to see implemented within our community. We would also, we are also going to have our questions and sessions prepped by the beginning of April. And we would greatly appreciate it if you could attend. The greater the representation from Council, the better. And in lieu of having a guest speaker, we greatly appreciate it if someone from the council or the council members would come also at the beginning to essentially open up our youth summit and answer other questions that may be available. Thank you. And are there any questions that I may answer?
The deputy mayor was looking to get a reminder on the date, so we make sure we have it in our calendar. What is the date of the youth summit?
The youth summit is on May 25th.
May 25th, okay. May 25th, okay.
From 11:00 to 3:00.
11:00 to 3:00, yep. Any other questions? I think it sounds fantastic. I think most of us would be more than happy to participate in any way you wish or in which it would be helpful. So let us know. Happy to help open whatever you need.
Hi, hi, counsel. Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the council members. My name is Shannon Bennett with the Human Resources Department, or excuse me, what am I, Human Services and the Youth Council. But I just wanted to add, so kind of an idea that we have is to have, just like I said, a Q and A discussion, have you guys as panel guests, maybe half an hour at the beginning of our agenda. And the students and I are aware that we would need to definitely prepare you for what to expect that day, so that you're not coming in blind. So what we're doing, and what I've tasked our students doing, is representatives from each of the schools to go back to their students some way in their clubs or whatever, kind of pool questions, concerns, on items that they're curious about. And so that they can come back. And like I said, I've tasked them with, maybe we have these questions by about beginning of April, so that we could present them to you in the proper format and prepare you for, if you so choose to participate in this panel discussion during that time.
That sounds great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, let us know if you need help with vendors on some of those topics of interest. We may know people in the community or business folks that may be more than happy to come participate. So let us know what you're looking for, see if we can help with that. Yeah, very good, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have our Clover Park School District report. And for this, we'll have board member Chrissy Kim.
All right, good evening, council members. It's my first time here representing the board, so I'm glad to be here and get to know you all. First of all, I want to thank you all and all of the voters here in Lakewood for supporting our levy. We were thrilled that it passed with a 59.57% voter approval. So that's like a historic high for the past couple of decades. We really appreciate the community's overwhelming support of our replacement levy and all of the schools in our district. This levy will provide critical funding to support student readiness, curriculum, nurses, school safety staff, educational technology, and extracurricular activities. So thank you, thank you, thank you. The next thing that I wanted to highlight is that March 11th through 15th is our Classified Employees Week. And, you know, teachers get a lot of attention in the media, and that's wonderful. We can't have our schools without teachers, but we also can't have our schools without the amazing classified staff. Our classified staff include our bus drivers, our paraeducators, our food service workers, our secretaries, and more. They are critical partners in ensuring children's access to high-quality, comprehensive education. And so please, please, you know, be aware of the classified staff in your circles and give them an extra shout out that week. And then I would hope that you would mark your calendars for March 9th. We have two events coming up for the district March 9th. The first is the Merle Hagbo Field Dedication. So we are renaming the baseball field after a longtime coach and mentor and teacher, Merle Hagbo, on Saturday, March 9th at noon. The CP High School Gathering Hall will be open prior to the ceremony at 11:00 a.m. for refreshments and an opportunity to view commemorative photos and memorabilia. So hope to see some of you there. And then that same day, we're also having our district steam fair that will be held March 9th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Harrison Prep and Four Heroes Elementary School. The steam fair will include student projects on display, hands-on activities, and demonstrations by the school and community organizations. So once you're out for one of them, you might as well stop by both, right? And then I wanted to highlight two of our amazing students. We have Lakes High School senior cadet major Trista Osgood has accepted an appointment to the U.S. Military Academy for the class of 2021 at West Point. So they will join fellow Lakes graduates Nathan Bosteros, Chandler Lugg, Amy Misselli, and Hunter Wendland, who are currently studying at West Point. So there's quite a connection between the city of Lakewood, Clover Park Schools, and the West Point Academy. And then finally, we have a student who is a Clover Park High School sophomore, Deepak Chadhary, was recently accepted to the Francis Hasselbein Leadership Institute. He is one of 10 students nationwide accepted into this program. He traveled to Chicago for a week in late February to participate. The intention of this week-long experience is to build skills through personal and small group settings by participating in activities such as rock climbing, escape rooms, and a ropes course. So just wanted to highlight a couple of our amazing students, and thank you all for the work that you're doing to support Clover Park Schools.
Well, thank you very much. Board member Kim, any questions or comments? Great work on that. And thanks for the thanks. Good to see the levy pass. Well, that concludes the proclamation presentation section of tonight's agenda. We now turn to public comment, period. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address at bhsumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically for the purposes of maintaining a transparent record. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, the city council received written comments in advance from Casey Crook, Tom Galbini, Kurt Redinger, and Bob Warfield.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, I reviewed those briefly, and they all pertain to the interest of the residents in the Tensler log and its proper movement, security, and preservation. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. There is also a public hearing this evening reporting regarding the proposed street vacation, as indicated. And if you are here to make comment regarding that, we ask that you preserve your comments for the actual portion of the public hearing on the regular agenda. Virtual comments are also authorized here in the city of Lakewood. If you'd like to provide live or virtual public comments, please dial us at Zoom meeting dial-in number 253-215-8782. Enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. So those who are here, if you have signed in on the sign-in sheet to address the counselor in the public comment period, I'll call you by name. If you haven't signed in on the sign-in sheet, that is absolutely fine, because you're welcome to queue up at the dais in any event. So I'll first call on those who have signed in person to address the council during public comment, although I don't see any on the sign-in sheet. Again, if you are here and you'd like to queue up to provide comment, you are welcome to do so. Going once, going twice? All right, well, I will turn to those who have logged in for virtual public comment. And calling the folks in order of the hands raised, I see Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, formerly of Lakewood, Washington. I'm going to try to keep this really simple. Of all I talk about the school for I don't know how many meetings, I heard nothing about measuring elementary and high school kids, especially on math, reading, and writing. Very necessary skill for solving problems and helping people understand what the problems really are. Well, I predict that you have a big problem coming your way. Since so many states are resisting illegal immigrants coming across the border illegally, California always sudden is finding a great increase in people entering the country in that area, which means they will be headed up I-5 and right into your community this summer, especially, because the coyotes have seen, they see where the weaknesses are. And there's three states there with beautiful weather and easy to survive in. And I suspect this summer there will be a stampede. So when they come into your community, what kind of math skills are you going to use to deal with where to put all these people? And remember, they're not vetted. And we've got a case in Georgia, just look at it. It's the poster woman for being against illegal immigrants, since the immigrant that killed her had been arrested several times, had committed previous crimes, and was never taken out of the country. More of that kind of thing is most likely to happen if you keep on encouraging it. And encouraging it is a bad example that you're setting for the kids that are in your schools, because it's against American law, just the way every ordinary person would likely see it. So I'm going to be watching very carefully, because I see the storm coming in your direction. And I'm going to watch how you use math skills to solve the problem if you ever do. Thank you very much.
Very good. Certainly not encouraging anyone with the wonderful weather lately. Next, Christina Minetti.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I just wanted to say there's no clock visible to those of us on Zoom, and not, not the dais either. So Christina, oh, that's better. Christina Minetti, Lakewood, I have several comments. Tensor log, this is probably the most significant artifact that Lakewood has. The Pierce County Rural Library District has once again disrespected the people of Lakewood and its heritage by its treatment of this important artifact. It should be displayed in the new, I still can't see the clock, displayed in the new library, putting it in a shelter in the park, where hardly anyone can see it, in conditions wholly unsuitable for it, is a disgrace. If this is the best that Lakewood can do, it should find a home in a museum, such as the Washington State Historical Museum or the Burke Museum, where it will be appreciated and may be viewed by residents from far and near. Have these been invited to have it? If really no museum will take it, then it should be kept in City Hall, where it will be safe and easily viewed. It needs to be treated with the utmost respect. From your document, it seems that no one even wants to take responsibility for it. If it falls while it's being moved and breaks into a million pieces, no one will be held responsible. Wouldn't that be convenient? No need to invest $150,000. Having grown up here, I can't believe that this is the fate of our beloved Tensor Library and our beloved Tensor Log, treated like a piece of junk that no one wants anymore. Barnes &amp; Noble, the proposal for a 390-unit apartment complex where the bookstore now stands is completely unrealistic. There could be even as many as almost 800 cars. Where will all the parking be? Where will all the cars go? It's not even on a major public road, crammed in the back of a shopping center. The road out is tiny, the road in front of Cabrini is tiny, with a 20 mile an hour limit. All the extra cars will add salmon-killing, six PPD, quinine runoff from the tires, gas and oil into the headwaters of the salmon-bearing Ponstaleon Creek, which is underneath somewhere, a creek where I grew up. Don't make the situation Lakewood worse so that some developer can make a buck. Think of the people of Lakewood and its environment first, not last. Tetra Tech, you are considering paying it over $6,500 for its technical memo. Contrary to what it implies, the situation in Wahop Lake is not fine, as anyone can readily see. It looks sick. The wildlife is all but gone. Compared to the 889 birds during the Audubon bird count pretreatment, there were just five birds this year. The city has polluted it at a huge expense to the people of Lakewood. I and other citizens ask that you now heal it. Undo this damage. Pouring chemicals into an algae-infested lake is the easy solution. A lake is a natural system, not a swimming pool. Treat nature with the respect it requires and deserves. Spanaway Swamp Tiny Home Project, do not allocate $1 million of Lakewood's funds to enable this misguided plan to put people in great need in the middle of a swamp, under a cord flight path, far from the closest bus stop, without chops or anything normal residents would expect. Thank you, I hope you take proper action on all of these points. They're all really important. Thank you very much.
Next. James Dunlop.
Hi, can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. So a couple of points, as Christina has just said, I think that the Tensor Log does need to be carefully looked after. If it's, if it's, you know, it requires clearly a lot of expertise. And I think that if the city and the library can't deal with it, then I think you should really take enormous steps to find someone else who can look after it. The second point relates to the tiny homes village that you are, it says that you are considering approving the release of $1 million of ARPA funding in support of the first 50 units in Pierce County Village Phase 1 project. So I assume that you're going to be, the city council is going to be voting on that, that's as I understand it. So I'm concerned about a conflict of interest here. I understand that several members of the city council are employees of Pierce County. And so you're going to be voting on it. So there seems, because of that conflict of interest, I would suggest that those members of the city council who are employees of Pierce County, or indeed who have any, any connection with Pierce County Council, any professional relationship, but particularly employees, do recuse themselves from that vote, because otherwise there is a clear conflict of interest. And that's about it. I mean, finally, I suppose I have to say with Dennis Haugen's comment about having clear evidence that, about what is actually going on in terms of education in Clover Park School District, particularly test scores, I have to say, I do agree with Dennis Haugen. You know, I know that the city takes, you know, likes to take the view that the school district can do what they like, and you don't really take an interest, you don't seem to take any real active interest in what the school district is doing, in the sense that you are never critical. You're never really critical, you never ask real questions. And I think some of the metrics that the school district presents to the people of Lakewood are vague and even a little misleading. They like to focus on graduation rates, they like to focus on improvements. They select the data that suits their case. And really, a test score is really the only way to, is the only really real way to evaluate education. Clearly, the city of Lakewood in the last 10 years has been, has seen a collapse in its educational standards comparative to the rest of Washington. So I think you need to be more critical. Anyway, thanks for hearing me out, and I might talk again in two weeks.
Thank you. That's the last individual with a hand raised during the virtual public comment period. Madam Clerk, do you see any other hands raised or any other interested commenters?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February 20th, 2024. B, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $6,513,039.27 for the period of January 13th, 2024 through February 15th, 2024. C, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,14,286.60 for the period of January 16th, 2024 through February 15th, 2024. D, motion number 2024-16, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the Pierce County Rural Library District to identify the roles and responsibilities of the city and the library as they relate to the ownership, transfer, handling, and storage of the Douglas fir section of tree. E, motion number 2024-17, approving the release of 1 million of American Rescue Plan Act funding in support of the first 50 units in the Pierce County Village Phase 1 project. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October 4th, 2023. Two, Community Services Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 15th, 2023. And three, Community Services Advisory Board meeting minutes of January 17th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any councilor wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Mr. LaRocella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that item E, motion number 2024-17, be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion.
Very good. Anyone else? Anyone else? Do I have a motion then to approve or adopt rather the consent agenda minus item E at this time?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, second by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item E. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to motion 2024-17, which is item E, approving the release of the 1 million of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding funds in support of the first 50 units in the Pierce County Village Phase One project. Mr. LaRocella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed last week in our study session, the project is currently asking for this $1 million when they are currently funded for the first third of their project. I would propose that we only provide a third of the initial funding and then revisit this in later on this year, potentially in October, for the remaining funding if they are then ready for the other 100 houses. At that point, if they are not ready, we can, we would have time to find another place to put this funding to serve members of our community.
Okay, so you're proposing an amendment. We don't have the amendment on the table yet, but you're proposing an amendment to 2024-17 that would provide one-third of the $1 million funding by a date certain?
Yes, by, I think it's in our packet as proposed.
Well, first I need, let's get a motion on the table and then I'll certainly give you the chance to make the amendment. Is there a motion to adopt 2024-17?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt motion number 2024-17.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstad, or second by Councilmember Bokey. And we adopt motion 2024-17. Now turn to Councilmember LaRocella to articulate his proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll note in our packets on page 72 what I had submitted, that we as a city commit to releasing the first third of our $1 million expenditure to construct the first 50 units under the same requirement that we had initially put out of giving a 20% priority for veterans. Second, that we commit to releasing the remaining two-thirds of the funding once it's been secured for the entirety of the project, again with the same provisions for veterans. And then third, if the balance of 100 units is not funded by the end of October of this year, we would then reconsider the allocation of the remaining approximately $667,000 in ARPA funds to better serve the urgent needs of our chronically homeless in our community.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Moss. So let's have a little discussion on the motion to amend, Mr. LaRocella.
I feel that this best serves members of our community by having the funds available where it's needed most. I am also concerned that they are requesting that we release our $1 million when it is approximately 4% of the overall project. If they're dependent upon us to move forward, that to me is a red flag that they may not be ready in a larger scheme.
Okay, very good. Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in considering this amendment, I look back at the history of this award, of our decision to invest $1 million in this housing program and particularly in housing that was going to benefit homeless veterans. When we originally were looking for projects to fund with ARPA dollars, this was one of the goals that we were very specific and only wanting to do and actually put out a request for proposals looking for someone that would look to do that and establish some ways to accommodate homeless veterans within the city of Lakewood. The reality was, nobody put forth a viable proposal. The next viable proposal that met the intent of what we were trying to accomplish was the initiative that was initially put forward by Pierce County and with their committing some significant funding to, that they would look at replicating the model that had been being used in Austin, Texas for tiny village site or sites that would do that and that they would look to do that and indicated that they would look for a project that would incorporate our goal of having services and providing some long-term relief from being homeless for veterans. Ultimately, their proposal evolved around the rescue mission, putting forth a proposal and moving forward. And when we first looked at committing the $1 million to this project, the primary concerns that we had as a council were environmental, that we were concerned about an original thought that maybe such a thing in the location that was proposed could be put on seppics and we were unacceptable with that. And we put forward that we wanted to say that our, the reason that why we put this thing that we would have to come back to release it was primarily based on the environmental issues being resolved and there being a commitment to do that. And the rescue mission has gone through and made that commitment. When we first were looking forward, that quite honestly, we have been glad to fund a project of 50 units with the dollars that we were originally putting forward. The fact that the vision of the rescue mission is 150 and eventually more, to me, in my mind, doesn't indicate that we changed from our original goal and now that we want to make our commitment proportionable based on a total of 150. You know, I would say that 50 units is in line with our original concept when we decided that we would invest $1 million of ARPA dollars and particularly that a significant portion of that would benefit veterans homelessness resolution. So I'm not in favor of slicing this up and of adopting the goal of 150. I believe that the successful completion of a phase of 50 with the commitment to 20% going to veterans along with the long-term commitment of as the project grows beyond 50, that there would continue to be that 20% focus on veterans is adequate to release the entire amount and not work with the, and create the administrative things that go with piecemealing it into a one-third, two-thirds. So I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Very good. Any other discussion? Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would echo Mr. Branstad's comments. And, you know, this project has really come from an idea taken from Texas that has seemingly worked really well. And I think that, you know, approaching the solution as a group and really being able to build on it is, you know, something really valuable. And, you know, it's gonna, the money's gonna go a lot longer, a lot further, if you will. So for those reasons, as well as what Mr. Branstad noted, yeah, I would be against the amendment.
Very good. Any other discussion, comments? Okay, see none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment?
Nay.
The amendment fails. We now turn to motion 2024-17 as it has been presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of motion 2024-17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing to consider the vacation of the 20-foot-wide alley abutting lots 1 through 14, block 69, town plat of Lakeview.
Very good. And for this, we'll have our Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Paul Busic, provide an overview.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Mayor Moss, members of city council. Tonight, city council is going to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed street vacation of the 20-foot-wide alley abutting lots 1 through 14, block 69, town plat of Lakeview. An application for the vacation of the alley was submitted on January 19th, 2024 by Jonathan Paul of Fulcrum Development, representing Steve Borman, the owner of real property directly adjacent to the right-of-way to be vacated. The property owner desires to take ownership of the public right-of-way in order to increase the area of their existing lots and build transit-oriented housing units. We have determined that the alley does not connect between two parallel streets and is not a through alleyway. A little bit of background on this. The property was originally dedicated as an alley way back in the 1890s town plat of Lakewood, Pierce County, state of Washington. It was acquired by Pierce County about that time and has been in their, had been in their hands for more than 25 years in the city incorporated. Upon incorporation, the city took over the responsibility of the alley. In 1972, a private developer had paved a portion of the alley and installed a storm drainage system in the alley right-of-way to provide primary access to an apartment complex and for waste management access. That apartment complex is no longer there, was taken out a few years ago. I believe that was a fire that took it down, damaged to the point where it's no longer viable. There has been an appraisal done, I'll speak to that in just a moment. I'd like to give a quick legal description, so it's in the record. The 20-foot-wide alley abutting or adjoining lots 1 through 14, block 69, town plat of Lakeview. According to the plat, thereof recorded in volumes five of Platts, page 12, Records of Pierce County, Washington, containing 3,583 square feet in the city of Lakewood, county of Pierce, state of Washington. On February 5th of this year, the city council passed a resolution number 202404 establishing tonight as the date of a public hearing to be held before the city council proposed vacation. In accordance with city code 1212090, all property owners of record within 300 feet of the limits of the proposed vacation were notified by mail the time, place, and purpose of the hearing. A notice of the hearing was also published in the Tacoma News Tribune on February 8th and February 13th. In addition, a placard was posted at the site where the vacation is being requested. There are five criterion that we evaluate whether we recommend a valley, or excuse me, vacation of a street or alley. Whether a change of use or vacation of the street or alley will better serve the public good, whether the street or alley is no longer required for public use or public access, whether it's a substitution of a new and different public way would be more useful to the public, and whether conditions may so change in the future as provided greater use or need that presently exists. And finally, whether objections to the proposed vacation are made by owners of private property exclusive of the petitioners abutting the street or alley or other governmental agencies or members of the general public. So we took a look at this and determined that vacation of this unused portion of alley will better serve the public good by providing additional housing within walking distance of the Lakewood Station District Public Transportation Center. We've determined that the proposed vacation of land is not required for public use or public access and that a substitution of a new and different public right-of-way would not be more useful. We don't anticipate these conditions to change in the future. Therefore, we do not see a need to hang on to this alleyway. What's also different about this alley versus other alleyways, it doesn't go anywhere. And so trying to retain it for public use would serve no beneficial use to the public because it deadens. The area on the other side of it was never platted. Therefore, the alley never continued through. And this is common on streets and alleyways right down that corridor on 111th, 112th. It's very unusual, but we have a lot of remnant alleyways and streets only go so far. And then there are just private use past that. In this particular case, we have not received any objections to the vacation from private property owners, government agencies, or the general public. So the Public Works Engineering Department is recommending that the vacation go forward. We do require a request that the vacation be effective upon payment to the city of Lakewood within 120 days of the amount that has been determined to be $25,000 as the appraisal value as provided to the city. We have reviewed that appraisal and we think it's an appropriate valuation of the 3,000, what was it, 3,583 square feet, pretty small area. We're also not recommending that we retain an easement or the right to exercise and grant easements in respect to this. In some cases, we do that because we have utilities that are already in that area, the right-of-way. In this case, there are none. So with that, I would like to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Busic, a couple of questions on the packet. What is the significance of the fact that one of the owners of an adjacent property did not sign the application for the alley to be vacated?
Thank you, Councilmember Branstad. It is of little significance because the property owner right there has not indicated a desire to be a party to this. However, the way the code is written, it takes two-thirds of the adjoining property owners to support a vacation proposal to the city council. If this goes forward, that property owner would receive that portion of that alleyway to them upon the city receiving the full value of that right-of-way. So if someone decides that they want to pay the full $25,000, they would get that portion of the alleyway to them. Now, I understand that the applicant is working with the owner of that parcel to strike an agreement and accord that's on a separate deal.
So that one of two things could happen if we were to approve this is that one is the alley would be vacated, the cost would be 25,000. A certain portion of the vacated alleyway would go to the applicant and the small portion of, as appropriate, would go to the non-applicant homeowner. And they would each be responsible for an appropriate portion of the $25,000 payment?
Actually, we're not that concerned who pays the bill as long as someone pays the full freight. So if the applicant decides that for whatever reason there's value to them to pay the full $25,000, the street vacation goes forward. There are five parcels the applicant has in their control and one they do not. So they're looking at this undoubtedly in the perspective of clearing this so that each one of these little pieces goes to their five parcels. In the future, they'll probably agglomerate all five of those into one larger development.
So the vacation being accepted upon receipt of the $25,000, if that all came from the applicant, the vacation would move forward and it would be up to the applicant and the adjacent property owner to resolve a boundary line issue essentially that would exist if...
The one property who didn't sign it would receive that portion of the alleyway to them. Now, if there's a secondary deal between them that if one pays for all of it, they would adjust the boundary line under a second that would be between the two entities, two property owners.
Okay. Okay, I understand. From the city's perspective, $25,000 is, $25,000, no matter where it comes from. And then, and then, and then we get out of the business of having to maintain that alley, and the land moves forward into contributing to new housing.
That's correct. Thank you.
I had one other question. In, in, in the comprehensive plan, there is a policy, it's policy T4-4, that says to discourage the abandonment of alleys. I, I noticed in the packet it talked about that we considered the, what's in the Lakewood Municipal Code, but that is the same evaluation and looked at with regards to, and I understand discourage is not the same as prohibit. So is, but, but, but the comprehensive plan statement was, was considered, but it was still determined that in this particular case, the abandonment, the vacation of this alley would be in the greater good.
That is correct.
Okay. Is that provision totally separate from this? Is that provision in the comprehensive plan? Is that really needed? Do we really need that? Is that, yeah, or is, is that something that we should perhaps ask the planning commission to consider, whether that's a, a, a policy in the comprehensive plan that is not there? As you mentioned, there are, there are other alleys, particularly in the Lakewood Station sub-area, that might themselves also be in the way of future redevelopment?
There are two parts to that in my mind, Councilmember Brandstetter. The first one is from a policy perspective, should the commission take a look at this or the board look at this? And I think that's something that you all need to decide whether to push that back to them. However, I will tell you that the policy, or excuse me, the recommendation to discourage the abandonment of alleys is, from my perspective, still solid, as long as it's done with care and thought. There are, not going to show you graphics tonight, but there are a number of alleys or remnant of alleys located littered throughout the city that frankly, if we applied that application to it, we would never, never get rid of, be able to vacate and get the value, and not just the cash value, but the value to the community by having this being used in a better fashion. We've got, I was looking at it tonight, just two blocks over, there's a five-foot remnant strip running from 112th to the hospital. Sometime in the past, when the county vacated 15 feet out of 20, and they left five foot. What am I going to do with five foot? Nothing. It's not even going to be a shared-use path. They're too narrow, I need 14 feet. But I've got other pieces where you look at the whole block, and everything is developed, and right smack in the middle is this remnant of an alleyway that for some reason was never vacated. So I think that the current language in the com-plan is still solid. I just think that we need to take a practical approach to the application of that for every one of these that comes before us, to determine whether there is continued value for use. There's a lot of alleyways also that haven't been fully developed, but they run from block to block. And so those right there, if someone came and said, I think we should vacate that, I would come up to you and say, I don't think that's a good idea because it still has value to the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions of Mr. Bucic? If not, thank you very much.
I think we need to open the public hearing.
That's what I'm going to do next.
Thank you. Didn't want to forget that part.
Yeah, no problem. Appreciate it. This is the date set for the public hearing to consider the vacation of the 20-foot-wide alley abutting lots 1 through 14, block 69, town plat of Lakeview. Public testimony on this is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address bshumaker@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided at the council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance, if any.
Mayor, we receive no testimony in advance of this public hearing.
Very good. So the sign-in sheet for those who are here to testify in person is blank, but again, let that not deter you. If you'd like to address and provide testimony to this matter, now is the time. Seen none, we will turn to virtual testimony. If you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and enter the meeting, raise your hand, and you'll be called upon to provide testimony pertaining to this matter and this matter only. So seen none physically in City Hall to address the council during the public hearing. I'll call on Mr. Haugen, who has his hand raised, for virtual comment or virtual testimony.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, previously a resident of Lakewood. The very first sentence coming out of the previous speaker's mouth was the purpose for transit housing. I'm not going to say anymore. That should raise a lot of questions, but I don't see, I don't think that'll happen. I don't think you can afford any more transit housing. I don't think anywhere in the Puget Sound you can afford any more transit housing because you have so many benefits now for these people that it just attracts them here. And you don't have the space without ruining the whole community anyway. But it should be your questions to ask. You should be grilling this previous speaker, grill him, drill him, drill him down, get more information. Thank you.
Any further virtual commenters? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Well, seen none, I will declare the public comment period, excuse me, the public testimony on this matter to consider the vacation of the 20-foot-wide alley abutting lots 1 through 14, block 69, town plat of Lakeview, closed. And I believe transit is spelled differently than transient, but that is for another day. We now turn to ordinances. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 799, amending Title 15A of the Lakewood Municipal Code to reflect the adoption of the 2021 additions of the International Code Council and other related codes as specified in Chapter 19.27 of the Revised Code of Washington.
Very good. And for this, we'll call on Ms. Becky Newton to give us a bit of an overview before we move to adopt ordinance number 799. Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this is a review of ordinance 799 for adoption with the City Council. This is amending Title 15 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, LMC, to reflect the adoption of the 2021 edition of the International Code Council, Building Code Council, or International Code Council, rather, pursuant to Chapter 19.27 of the Revised Code of Washington. So per information submitted by our building official, Mr. Gindy, our recommendation is to adopt the draft ordinance establishing revised building codes with an effective date of March 15, 2024. The purpose of this draft ordinance is to adopt the 2021 International Building Codes for Residential, Energy, Mechanical, Existing Building, Property Maintenance, Uniform Plumbing, Fire, Fuel Gas, Wild Urban Interface Code, and Swimming Pool and Spa Codes, in addition to the Washington State Amendments as part of the city's Title V Regulation of Building Codes and Standards. The codes are designed to require minimum performance standards and requirements for construction and construction materials, consistent with accepted standards of engineering, fire, and life safety, and also to eliminate restrictive, obsolete, conflicting, duplicative, and unnecessary regulations and requirements which could unnecessarily increase construction costs, et cetera. As of this writing, the building codes are still going through some level of adjustment by the state legislature. Further, as was reported on February 26, there is a pending lawsuit in Thurston County Superior Court scheduled for review the week of March 4, which may defer action on all or some parts of the 2021 building codes. There is no fiscal impact to the city. Continuing, while there remains some level of uncertainty with these codes, the best course of action is to adopt the draft ordinance with the understanding that we will likely return with some amendments, possibly on March 19 or 18, to reflect any last-minute changes by the state or the courts. And following on page 159 are proposed amendments and with their purpose. And with that, I will conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Newton. Any questions before we offer a motion to adopt ordinance number 799? Any questions of Ms. Newton? Mr. Bokey, did you have a question? Very good. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 799? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Brandstetter, that we adopt ordinance number 799. Any further discussion? Mr. Brandstetter?
Mr. Mayor, you know, this iteration of the changes to the building code has been less smooth than in past cycles. You know, it was originally supposed to take place a year ago, almost, and the states changed the dates to move forward, and thus we're now looking at faced with a, a March 15 date, which the state is still adhering to in, in their view. And while I appreciate that there may be some action that occurs in the courts that may push that date out or create some modifications, I do think it behooves us to move today because once we pass something, then there are a few days, well, it gets published and things before, before it's effective. And we want to adhere to the current intent to, to have the code adopted by March 15. That, however, in that regard, okay, I would move to amend the, the single whereas that appears in the draft ordinance to replace the, the date July 1, 2023 with March 15, 2024, such that the whereas would read, whereas Title 15A Lakewood Municipal Code must be updated to reflect the new code adoption and amendments to the state building code established by RCW Chapter 19, P. 27, and found in Title 51 of the Washington Administrative Code, and which become effective statewide on March 15, 2024.
Let me first ask our city attorney before I ask for a second on the motion. Is that a scrivener's error that we can address that way, or should we formally amend as suggested by Mr. Brandstetter? And would that be accurate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Well, I think if it's just a matter of a mistaken date, then what you have is something that could just be corrected as a scrivener's error. Now, as a matter of legislation, I will tell you that the whereas's are not part of legislation. They're part of your legislative intent. So that would be one thing. The other thing is, and it's because your city manager is always 100% on top of these things, that hearing has been pushed to March 8. The hearing in Thurston County that's going on, on this stuff. So we may or may not know something by March 15. But...
It does beg the question, and when will the amendments become effective statewide? Is it going to be March 15? Is it going to be a different date than that?
I think that's, that's the thing. We're not entirely sure. If you go back to the recommendation was, that was made by your former CED, Mr. Buhr, he was saying, get ahead of it, get the legislation in place, and then come back, as Ms. Newton, your interim CED, was recommending, get the language in place. If you need to amend, we can come back and do amendments. But that would make the date a little bit of a moving target. But I think to the degree that it was made with the understanding that we would know more by March 15, it's, it's a scrivener's error. The intent was to hit the legislative date.
Got it, which is certainly not July 1, 2023.
Correct.
So Mr. Brandstetter's correct. If you're accepting of that as a scrivener's error, and given the attention the city attorney will, will take to correcting the whereas, which is not legislative in nature, we can move forward. Otherwise, I'm fine getting a second.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would think that it would be better for us to vote to, to acknowledge the new date. I think it's, I, I think that the issue is that the date that's there was the original date in the past, so it wasn't just a mistake. And it's a date that has changed, but that wasn't there in the draft, and that if we're going to come back later with an amendment that changes the date again, then I think that maybe if we adopt a date now, that that's the least confusing situation.
Very good. Do I have a second to the amendment? It's been moved by Mr. Brandstetter, seconded by Councilmember LaRocella, that we adopt ordinance 799 as amended, correction, that we amend ordinance 799 to correct the whereas with the date of March 15, 2024, as suggested. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We now move to, the amendment has been adopted. We now move to ordinance number 799 as amended. Any further discussion, Mr. Brandstetter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, while this is a far-reaching ordinance, much of it is essentially doing again what we have done before. However, one new element in this cycle was the establishment of some wildland urban code language that didn't appear previously in previous updates of the, of, of, of a code. And I think when we had our study session, we found that, that the implementation of this particular code language, there were some problems because it was dependent upon having a, an accurate map of, that indicated the wildland urban interface areas that was going forward. And when we received that briefing, essentially, the summary that we were, that, that, that we, that we were given is that the path forward that was recommended at the briefing was that we adopt the code language as, as is put forward, but that we acknowledge the state's indication that their intent is to produce some accurate maps upon which the code language can be effective, and that that may take a while. And so in, in that regard, I have, would, would move to amend the ordinance as follows, so that...
Where, where are we looking here? Where are we looking here? So I can track it for you.
Okay. First of all, I would add a new whereas, that to read, whereas an accurate usable map defining wildland urban interface areas within the city of Lakewood is not currently available. And that was the information we received at our study session. And then, secondly, to amend Section 2, Paragraph L. And I would amend it to read, the 2021 edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface, published by the International Code Council and amended by the Washington State Building Code Council, in Chapter 51-55, Washington Administrative Code, is hereby adopted. The effective date of implementation is deferred until such time as an accurate usable map defining wildland urban interface areas within the city of Lakewood is available and adopted by the Lakewood City Council. And, Mr. Mayor, I would just note that in the page that was provided to council members, that I, my motion changes the word approved to adopted, because that's the appropriate thing that we would do.
So looking at the sheet which describes your second amendment, which has two parts. The first is to add a whereas, as indicated, that the accurate usable map defining wildland urban interface areas within the city of Lakewood is not currently available. And the second portion of your second amendment is to amend Section 2, Paragraph L, by adding the language as indicated on the proposed sheet here with your word change from approved to adopted in the last sentence.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second on this proposed second amendment, which has two parts?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we further amend ordinance number 799 as articulated. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that the amendment is proposed to just, to both implement the proposed path forward that was put forward by staff to us at the study session, but to do it by putting it within the code to be very transparent, that there is a date in the future is yet undetermined, when those particular code measures would be implemented in our, in our process to be able to go and do that. And so it's, and I also think that if, if it takes the state two years to come up with that map, that also gives us two years to work on the legislative realm to provide guidelines that, to mapmakers, that make it make sense in an environment like Lakewood in the same way that it would, may make a cent twist.
Very good. Any further discussion on this second amendment? All those in favor of the amendment as articulated to ordinance number 799 signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The amendment, the second amendment has been adopted. We now move to ordinance number 799 as twice amended. Any further discussion? Mr. Pearson.
Just a comment on, you know, I generally, I support this. I think that we have to ultimately. But, you know, when, when the, the language, you know, comes and says that the codes are designed to effectuate the following purposes and objectives, and then the one says to eliminate restrictive, obsolete, conflicting, duplicating, unnecessary regulations and requirements which could unnecessarily increase construction costs, you know, that's really kind of backwards almost from, I think, what's really going on at the state level, because these in fact are increasing construction costs. And so I just, I don't like that, you know, language like that is nested in here, and I think it gives the wrong impression. So I just wanted to comment on that.
You don't want to move to amend the language?
No.
I appreciate that. Coming from a sound engineering perspective, I appreciate it. I would echo your comments. Any further comments on the motion as amended? All those in favor of ordinance number 799 as twice amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance number 799 as amended has been adopted. We now turn to ordinance number 800. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 800, adopting a new section of the Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 1.22, City Flag Policy.
Very good. And for this, we have our city attorney, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on the flag display ordinance proposed before you for action tonight. I've reviewed this with you previously. It's very brief. It's very consistent with the practice that this city has followed for years, and it's consistent with what you would find on Municipal Research Services Center.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Walker? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion to adopt ordinance 800?
Mayor, so moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt ordinance number 800. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance number 800 has been adopted. Does not appear that we have any unfinished or new business, correct, Mr. Caulfield?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. So you have the floor for reports by the city manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Like to first call back up the city attorney to give you a bit of a briefing on some state legislation that's making its way through the, through the process specific to automated traffic safety cameras.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Member, Mayor, members of the council. I think the manager was trying to hint at me that I wasn't done, but I was so happy that I was done, that I didn't notice that. Essentially, I'm not asking for action tonight, but maybe coming before you, depending on how the legislature goes with the automated traffic cameras. Just when you think it's over, they go through another round down there in Olympia, and one of the pertinent questions is whether or not we will need to amend our own code section in order to specify where any revenue generated from those cameras goes. There are cities that have made that specification. The latest version of the bill that I'm aware of, because it changes every time it goes anywhere down there, was that if you didn't have certain language in your legislation, original legislation predating January 1 of this year, you would not be able to keep a certain amount of the revenue. Now, that has been getting changed and morphed as it's gone through. One of the other features of the latest version of the legislation would have protected our program as well, but for other reasons. I may be coming back before you to try and put in whatever language is necessary to position us best, assuming that the legislation that passes doesn't preclude us from doing that. I will tell you that in conversations with our lobbyist, Shelley Helder, she has said this is far and away one of the most confusing bills out there right now because of the number of things that have been strapped upon it. I'm sorry if that doesn't sound very clear to you all. We thought that we were going to bring you language tonight, but this has yet to get completely through the legislature and become law. I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have. It could turn into an exercise in frustration on your part, because I may not have many answers.
Sounds like at best, we'll try to address whatever comes around to protect the general fund as best we can, right?
Right. That is, that is the goal.
Right. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate the update. Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor, and just a few updates. I'm very pleased to report that we heard from Congresswoman Strickland's office today and our request in support of LSA's new 25-unit affordable housing project, the million dollars that you folks have been championing. It is now part of a mini bus appropriation package that is expected to be voted on by the House later this week, actually on Wednesday. From there, it will go to the Senate. It's a million dollars, Mayor. From there, it will go to the Senate, and then from there, it will go to the President. It's my understanding that this is part of the overall omnibus bills to keep the government running. But again, want to thank and recognize our Congresswoman for continuing to champion and really advocate for this project. And so hopefully we'll know either by next week whether or not LSA has been able to secure that million. And by the way, if for some reason it doesn't go forward as part of this congressional action, it's still in the queue. It's not something that's dead. It's just a matter of Congress being able to find the time to be able to take action on, on not just this item, but many, many others. We also understand that included in there is $960,000 for the Lakewood Water District as part of their PFAS initiative. Also, wanted to pass on Partners for Parks has secured another $200,000 grant, this one from the Milgard Whisper Foundation, and of course, that's in support of the H-Barn renovation project. So that means they have now secured 1.6 million of their three and a half million dollar commitment. I know I previously reported that we're in the process of submitting the federal raise grant in support of our downtown green loop project. We did hit the send button on that last week, actually, I think it was week before. And if you recall, last year, we requested $850,000. This time, we requested 1.1 million to not just do the surveying and the conceptual planning, but to try and get it as close to 30% design as we possibly can. We are also very fortunate, and I want to recognize our Assistant to the City Manager and Policy Analyst, Michael Vargas, for going out and securing 15 letters of recommendation from a number of community partners, and I will say no small task to try and do that, and also positive reflection of the level of support that we get from our many partners, starting with the county, all the way down to some of our local utility partners. We understand that the U.S. Department of Transportation is expected to make a decision on whether or not to award these grants, or the award of these grants, no later than June 27th of this year. Also, one of our sister cities, I think, as the council's aware, the city of Gimhee from the Republic of Korea, they have confirmed that they, I mean, they had confirmed that they're coming, however, they have now confirmed their exact dates, and they expect to fly in sometime on Thursday, July 18th, and they're expected to be with us through either Sunday or Monday, July 22nd. We also understand they have other sister city relations on the West Coast or here in the United States, and they plan on visiting those, but they're going to be visiting with us first. And of course, they'll be here to celebrate Summer Fest with us, as well as some other activities that we're in the process of planning out to really show them a very nice time, very similar, if not the same, as they, the experience that they provided us when we visited with them last year. As it relates to your calendar, just wanted to mention that your county council member, Janie Hitchen, from District 6, is hosting an in-district Pierce County meeting at the Sillicum Town Hall this Thursday, beginning at 6:30 PM. And as you know, she rotates. A couple of years it was here, then it was Dupont-Sillicum. And so again, I just wanted to alert you to that. Also, next week, on March 12th, Habitat for Humanity is having their annual fundraising luncheon at the Hotel Murano in the bicentennial pavilion. On March 15th, the American Lake VA Medical Center is going to be celebrating their centennial. On, also on March 15th, but in the evening, is the, is the Second Annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Service Award Gala, sponsored by the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, and that's at the McGavick Center. So please get your tickets if you haven't already done so. The following week, on March 20th, Wednesday, is the annual meeting of the Economic Development Board for the Tacoma-Pierce County, and of course, the city is a very active and engaged participant with that, with that organization, and that's at the Greater Tacoma Convention and Trade Center, and the city will be sponsoring a table, and I know a number of members of council will be attending that. Later that evening, the school district, actually, the School District Superintendent's Youth Advisory Council is going to be hosting a private screening of a student voice on the fentanyl awareness, and I understand in talking with the superintendent, that is pretty powerful. This is an invite only to get an initial showcasing of the work that they have put together. And so if you have an opportunity, I would invite you to please RSVP to that, or if you need some help there, we'd be more than happy to do that for you.
It's March 20th?
March 20th, 6 PM, at the AMC Theater. March 22nd, which is a Friday, there's a VIP walking tour on State Leadership and Skills Conference that's over at the McGavick Center. And then, leading through the end of the month, March 27th, there's a couple of events. Community Healthcare, of which the city has been a great partner with for a good number of years, is hosting their annual luncheon, laughter luncheon, which is also a fundraising event, also at the Hotel Murano in bicentennial pavilion, and that's from 11:30 to 1:00. If you haven't had a chance to attend that event, that is actually a very enlightening event, because they actually bring in a comedian, and it kind of, I don't know, you never think in the middle of the day. So, but if you have an opportunity, I would certainly encourage you to attend that. It's, it's not just well-attended, but it's also very entertaining. I think we can always use a laugh in the middle of the week and in the middle of the day as well. And then, on March 27th, Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Sillicum Park at the pavilion with a focus on special events. I would like to recognize that we've been in contact with the historic Fort Sillicum Association, Walter Neri. He's the current president of that group. And, I mean, I should have known this, but I didn't. But he let me know that this year is the 175th anniversary of Fort Sillicum, when it was first stood up. And so they're looking to try and do some recognition of that. Quite frankly, they're just limited with volunteers and such. So did want to let you know that we have offered a couple of things. One is, if the council's interest, it's certainly to, you know, recognize them or recognize, you know, this, this historic presence with a proclamation, and they're going to be working with the Nisqually Indian Tribe on trying to pull something together along those lines, given the close relationship that the tribe had there, and of course, it's their ancestral lands. But also, perhaps, Mayor, having one of your coffee houses maybe in August or so, on August 22nd, because that is the exact date, apparently, of the 175 years, and having it down there, and inviting the public to come down and, you know, just get a, you know, get a kind of a bit of a history lesson on the history of how that all came about, and things along those lines. So I would just say more to follow on that. And since the association is a partner with the city, we do provide funding to them. We have also offered to perhaps even use our Lakewood Connections magazine to try and get the word out. We have also encouraged them perhaps to have a booth at Summer Fest or one of our other events that we have throughout the year, again, just to celebrate the anniversary of that. So again, I just wanted to give you some situational awareness on that, on that discussion. And then on March 30th, of course, the city council retreat. And then I'll just end with, on April 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, Lieutenant General Retired Bill Harrison's memorial service will be held at the First Baptist Church. That again, is from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and that is a public event. So with that, Mayor, that's, that's my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. I may need to go see a banker to afford all the events. Any questions of Mr. Caulfield? Well, thank you. Then let's turn to council comments. Let's start with Councilmember LaRocella tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank, remember the Red Cross who is here tonight, really appreciated that he was here to speak on their behalf and encouraged us to all donate blood, which is something I try and do as often as I can. So I encourage everyone in council and in our community to do the same. Last week, I attended the Randy Black tank dedication for Lakewood Water District. They officially put his name on the side of the tank up on Nyansha, up on the hill, and that was a great turnout of, I think, everyone who works for the water district was there, but other water officials in our area were also there. So that's not- So it's not folks from Tacoma Water and other places. And it was, it was a good celebration, so I appreciated that. I also appreciated the comments of concern on preserving the Tenzler log as it gets moved, including one of the written comments was about adopting best practices from other places like Olympic National Park. They had some examples of large logs that have been moved and preserved, so I would encourage our city staff to reach out to them as well to understand how they did it and do it correctly. And my last comment is on the red light and speeding cameras, and I just want to remind myself, as well as others, that really our purpose is to make our community safer first and foremost, and the revenue generated beyond that is secondary, but also important to help with our general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Clover Park School District Board Member Chrissy Kim mentioned the renaming of the sports field, and I plan to attend that with my wife. It's important to her as well. She's a board member of the Clover Park School District, so I'll be going to that with her. And just also, you know, while I'm talking about school district stuff, recognize the great leadership by Mr. Banner and his team and the, the, the great effort put forth for the MLK project. That was really well done, and yeah, it was a great, great execution and outcome for that. So the couple of calendar items, so I'm going to try to attend the District Six meeting in Silicon Town Hall. And then going to the Economic Development Board Annual Meeting on twenty-something later this month. So I do plan on utilizing one of the seats there. And then I have a meeting next on the 11th with Josh Brown of the Pierce Town Regional Council. So he's coming down to meet me here. Lakewood, I guess I'll be up in the council's office. Is there a way to book that? I just want to make sure that we have a place to go talk. So that doesn't seem like it's a lot of traffic, but just wanted to...
You don't need, you don't need to book a council member. It's your office.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm planning on meeting him and kind of doing my onboarding with the PSRC, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to say just a great job to the students for the, and Sylvie, who helped put that on, and Daryl, numerous amount of people put on the Hidden Heroes video series. It was just really good, and it was really great to see that kind of student involvement with it. And tonight, I attended virtually the Arts Commission meeting where they were going over utility box wraps, and there has been a ton of submissions, especially from students, so it will be really great to see what comes out of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bokey?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Put me down for the, I think I sent something to you, city manager, about being at the EDB lunch on the 20th downtown, and there is a Planning Commission meeting this Wednesday. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're doing the proclamation and then receiving the proclamation for the Red Cross that the, yeah, I, I made a note that, about giving blood, okay? I, I think I, you know, I heard him encourage all of us to look, to do that by example, and I intend to, and I encourage the rest of you to, you know, look at, at making that effort. I, I think it was both certainly appropriate, but also quite uplifting, the recognizing the, the young people and the, and the, and the work that went into this year's Martin Luther King effort to be able to go do that. You know, first because it was a, an effective way to maintain Dr. King's relevance even after over 50 years, to, to, to be able to go forward to do that. And the fact that I was particularly impressed by the fact that the young people's voices were their own, that they were not scripted for them to be able to go and do that. And, and I found that very encouraging that there was a team of, a multi-generational team that worked to put that, that Martin Luther King effort, effort to get together. And after that was done, it, it struck me during one of the comments at Public Comment that we, that was kind of the mantra of, students aren't learning what they need to learn, that those young people were a demonstration of being able to voice, to, to, to critically think, to, 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 and, and, and to voice things over there, that in fact, we have young people that are learning the skills that they are going to need to, to be able to move forward to do that. And I think, I think you don't need a, a score to see what's right in front of you when, when, when it presents itself. And then, you know, our, our Women's History Proclamation was, you know, you know, certainly something that's, that's appropriate, but I would also say that I thought it was a bit understated, that it is not just the women that are in history books that we owe things to, and it is something as, Ms. Kraus, my colleagues on the, on the council, the fact that we have a legislative deliberation in Washington where all three of the persons representing us are women, and that in the state delegation, you know, five of the six are, are women being able to go and do that. So it's, it's, while it's Women's History Month, it is, it is a forward-looking proclamation. It's not that women have made history, it's that women are making history in, in going forward. And I think it was really appropriate that we went, went and did that. And I would encourage that we follow through with the historic Fort Silicon operation in manners, as the city manager alluded to, because I think that's entirely consistent with our vision statement of where we want to be informed and inspired by our, by our history, in, in terms of going to do that in that knowing our history helps us to see the way forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my certificate for giving one gallon of blood. I thought that was enough, but I'm, I'm open to doing that. So I appreciate that, that information as well. The Lakewood Multicultural Coalition chose the month of March because it is National Women's History Month, and I appreciate your comments because we can work that into some of our messages that we get out. It's, it's ongoing. It's today and tomorrow and forever. So thank you for that. And thank you all for the support for LMCC, and I know you're going to enjoy the evening, so I'm looking forward to it. I'm ready for it. Let's see, the cutoff date is Wednesday. Okay, so if you're planning to go and you haven't put that dial over here, bring it on. Okay, the MLK video, I, I have to say that was my favorite. To just to let those students have their own voice and be heard, and the young man that was here is amazing. I just met him tonight for the first time, and he's an amazing young man. And I think that is what we need to make sure that our future generations carry on the legacy of those that have led the way for us. So with that, thank you so much, and I look forward to the rest of the week.
Well, thank you. I echo the comments on the presentations tonight in honor of those who did yeoman's work on the Martin Luther King videos. It was just great to see the student voice and to recognize all the effort that went into that. It takes a little bit of guts to get on camera and to kind of share from your heart. So they did a great job. And it was fun to see the coach and Superintendent Banner here as well recognizing the great work of the kids, so fantastic there. The Red Cross is a great organization. I was on the board for, it was my first board ever that I served on when I came here in 1993, 92, 93, and I was on the board for six years. And as a young guy overseas in Germany, I actually was the recipient of a Red Cross message in 1988. I was called back home because my older sister was dying of cancer at the time. So I think of the Red Cross fondly and their mission, and certainly hope that we can continue to support them in all the endeavors that they do because they do a lot of work. And sometimes I don't think we recognize the wide swath of work and contact that they have in the community, especially for those people who serve in the military. It's a, it's a big deal, so. Although I was told, because I lived in Germany at the time, that I could never give blood because of the mad cow thing in the 80s, for whatever reason. It's the weirdest thing. I think they've gotten over that, so I'll check into it. But that was a reason that I couldn't give blood for like decades. Said, did you live in Germany between 1980 something and 80 something? Yes. Well, sorry. You're tainted with mad cow. It was an utter disaster. Yeah, that's what they told me. All right. I do appreciate the comments on the Tenzler log, both written and in person tonight. I know we're going to do what we can to preserve it for history, and I know that Ms. Dodsworth talked about some sort of special acrylic coating, perhaps. I know she's looking into best practices for that to make sure that it's something that can be preserved for many generations because it is something revered by many, many residents here in Lakewood. And then finally, I want to recognize the cops versus teachers charity basketball game that's coming up Friday, April 26, 2024. I was reminded by Baron Coleman to put this out to all of you, and for the city clerk to perhaps push this out on the calendar. It's Friday, April 26, 2024, cops versus teachers. It's a charity event. Doors open at 5:30, tip-off is 6:30 at Lakes High School Gym. All proceeds are going to support the Lakewood YMCA programs for, for youth, including Teen Night and the foster care membership program. So great organization, great event. It's a reminder to make your wager, make it, make it soon.